And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a duly sworn City of Goddard police officer.
Of a duly sworn City of Goddard police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the Goddard Police Department.
Thank you.
The newest officer we have is Officer Carpenter. Officer Carpenter, on January 20th this year, was hired to the Goddard Police Department and is currently completing a field training period. Officer Carpenter comes to us as a certified officer from the Hayesville Police Department, who has served since 2019. Officer Carpenter worked for the Kansas Department of Corrections for two and a half years in El Dorado, prior to becoming a certified law enforcement officer. He also held other customer service-related jobs, which contributed to his ability to communicate well with others. Graduate of Wichita South High School, Officer Carpenter has attended Butler and Hutchinson Community Colleges, as well as Wichita Area Technical College, with focuses on law enforcement and emergency medical services. We'll read you the same thing. Can you raise your right hand? I'll swear again. I, Chase Carpenter.
I, Chase Carpenter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a duly sworn City of Goddard police officer.
Of a duly sworn City of Goddard police officer.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the Goddard Police Department. The next item I have here is an award. This will be to Officer Mellington. Officer Carpenter, as well, as you saw, they were both Hayesville Police Officers together. And at the same time, they were involved in the same incident. This is an incident that occurred in Wichita. Both Officer Mellington and Carpenter were on the same event. Officer Carpenter was actually still employed with the Hayesville Police Department when he received this medal from the Wichita Police Department. So now Officer Mellington is employed with us, and Wichita has given us the honor to present him with the Wichita Police Department wreath, a bronze wreath of merit. So, employed with the Hayesville Police Department in June of 2021, and he is being awarded the Medal of Merit for his actions on this day, in June 19, 2021. At about 22:18 hours, two Wichita Police Officers responded to a welfare check call at residence in southwest Wichita near I-235 and MacArthur, north of Hayesville. Upon arrival, the Wichita PD officers learned that a suspect had assaulted his girlfriend and left the house. In searching for the suspect, Wichita PD officers located the suspect in a shed armed with a rifle. The officers immediately came under fire and called for help over the radio as they retreated to their police cars. Another incoming Wichita PD officer arrived and was shot at least two times. As more officers arrived to assist, including then Hayesville Officers Mellington and Carpenter, they continued being shot at by the suspect with the rifle. A Wichita PD officer finally had an opportunity to fire and shoot the suspect, who later deceased because of that gunshot. The actions of Officer Mellington greatly contributed to the overall outcome of the event and potentially lives of other law enforcement officers. This action was recognized and awarded by the Wichita Police Department to be presented to now-Goddard Officer Matthew Mellington. It is my honor to present this award to Officer Mellington on behalf of the Wichita Police Department. Thank you for your work. And the last presentation hopefully I have to do tonight, but not the least. I'm promoting Sergeant Andrew Circle tonight from sergeant to lieutenant. Sergeant Andrew Circle has been employed with the Goddard Police Department since November of 2012, when he was hired as an already certified police officer. Sergeant Circle started his career in law enforcement as a non-commissioned service officer for the Wichita PD in 2006, after gaining three years of public service experience as an animal control officer in Wichita. And trust me, that's a lot of experience in those three years. In 2008, he became a reserve officer with Kichai Police Department, and was later hired as a part-time officer in 2009. Later on in 2009, he completed the Kansas Law Enforcement Officer, or Kansas Law Enforcement Officer. Sergeant Circle was promoted to the rank of sergeant, supervising over officers and providing training. Sergeant Circle has been the recipient of the Goddard Medal of Merit and Distinguished Service Medal during his tenure at Goddard PD. Sergeant Circle has also attended both Butler County and Dodge City Community Colleges. So with that, I will allow the honors of pinning the lieutenant bars on his collar by his wife.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you, guys. So I'm gonna have to tell Mayor Kessler down in Hayesville that I stole two of those.
Yep.
Very good. Okay. Move on to item F. So agenda. You guys have a problem? Question about Mayor Kessler? Make a little bit of a continued agenda.
Second.
Motion by Larry, second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
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 Item H1.
Honorable Governing Body, this is server upgrades and multi-factor authentication rollout for cybersecurity insurance compliance. So in late September last year, city staff was informed that our cybersecurity insurance policy from Travelers, who is through Renton Company, who is our insurance agency, would require multi-factor authentication in order to come into compliance. So Renton Company recommended the switch from our old insurance, cybersecurity insurance company, E and C Insurance, to Travelers in 2020, because of a more robust policy coverage. So Renton Company is now recommending to go ahead and try to come into MFA compliance to maintain Traveler's cybersecurity insurance. This policy protects the city against cybersecurity attacks such as malware, ransomware, phishing, and other attacks that can take down either individual devices or the system entirely. And it's not just Travelers that's gonna be requiring this. More likely than not, pretty much any insurance company that's gonna provide cybersecurity insurance is gonna eventually, within the next few years, require multi-factor authentication. It's just kind of the direction. Everything's going from your personal Gmail accounts to what we rolled out a few months back, which was converting our Outlook email addresses to multi-factor authentication. So what this does is takes that a step further, and when city staff are actually logging into our devices, there's gonna be a multi-factor authentication process required for that as an additional layer of security. So again, the only way to come back into compliance through and re-up that Traveler's insurance is implementing this MFA program. Again, while some insurance companies do not yet provide it, they eventually all will. And our IT management company noted that we may be a little bit early in the process, but here in the next year to two years, a lot of cities are gonna have to be implementing multi-factor across the board. So on relatively short notice, Gilmore Solutions put together a proposal to upgrade the system to bring us into compliance. This includes some new equipment, HP switches that attach to our server, and that'll give us the ability to use multi-factor authentication, not only in the office, but when we're moting into our devices. So when we're working from home, on our laptops, we're able to remote into our desktop still and access the information we need to work. The software will be Google Duo via a remote device, so you can use a cellphone or a tablet to access that authentication. There will be quite a few man-hours involved to get everyone aboard with this process. Aside from the installation process of the switches, it could take anywhere from a week to three weeks to get everybody switched over to multi-factor. This includes bringing all administrative, public works, and police department staff onboard, on both remote laptops and desktops at City Hall. There are other cities and counties in Kansas that have faced ransomware attacks. Extra layers of security like MFA can help prevent these circumstances. However, when security is not enough, when there is a breach, when there is a ransomware attack, the insurance policy is designed, like any insurance policy, to protect us, to keep our downtime as little as possible, and if there is a ransom, then find a way to get that negotiated and paid in a timely manner. The most recent example of a local government agency that faced a ransomware attack or a hacking situation was Potomac-Watomi County, and they were able to get it settled, I believe after a month, for an undisclosed amount. But the ransomware was getting them for like $100,000. So in Exhibit H2A of the Agenda Packet, it kind of lays out exactly what is covered by the insurance in case of a cyber attack. So here are some key items that the Traveler's policy would cover. Privacy and security, all media, regulatory, privacy breach notifications, provides computer and legal experts, betterment, cyber extortion, data restoration, public relations or communications in the event of an attack, computer fraud, funds transfer fraud, social engineering fraud, telecom fraud are all protected, any interruption in business, and then a total system failure too. So here are the devices that will be installed as part of the process. So staff would like to request $16,317.01 for this project. The new MFA software and hardware implementation will be allocated to the Capital Improvement Fund, City All-Cost Center, capital outlay, 90, 150, 8600. Well, I'm quite a spiel there, so I'm happy to take any comments, questions.
I'm pretty familiar with, I mean, a lot of businesses are gonna have to start through a lot of this stuff. Do you guys have any questions?
No. I kind of figured we'd already have it.
It has to come sooner or later, so it's, you know, we do have some temporary coverage through March, but it's not very extensive.
All right. Is there a yearly fee in terms of your charges?
So the only yearly fee will be the fee, a monthly fee for, like, the software, like, the Google software that you actually use to log in. So it's about, so the two fees are $3 per person a month and $6 per person a month. Quick math, I think it'll be right at 400 bucks a month, basically.
And we factored that in during budget last year, that there would be additional ID costs.
So basically, this is for the hardware, this is for the company to come set us up, this is basically all taken care of.
A lot of this is installation, and they, or labor costs, and they built a little bit of extra into that labor, depending on, if this gets rolled out in a week.
So this is the total package deal?
This is the total package deal. It may not be quite that much if they get it rolled out pretty quickly, but they did build some contingency in there in case it takes two or three weeks to get this.
What's the renewal fees every year?
I believe the only fees involved are just the monthly fee for the actual multi-factor program we use, so we're using, Gilmore Solutions recommended Google Duo, and so we have to supply that for every.
So we upgrade to all this, and then we just pay a monthly fee of?
Right. It's like what we would pay for, to access Outlook or Microsoft Office programs, it's a monthly subscription.
Because those managed switches are the ones that are monitoring the data that's coming in and out, and if there's, like, irregular activity, right?
Yeah, and it's got the life link that you see regularly, and this is just upgrading our current one, which was, I think, due for replacement.
So, yeah, so the switches are, yeah, switches are a one-time cost out of that, and then labor, and then, which is the majority of that, and then, I believe, $400 is to get us going for, like, the first month of fees. We're not paying anything right now, because we don't have multi-factor implemented.
We do for Outlook, but it's through web-based, it's not hardware for direct access, so, like, PD with their stuff, Public Works with all the GIS stuff, this'll give coverage for the stuff going out, so the folks can't pirate the signal.
I'll give it to them. I'll make the motion to approve the request as before.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Honorable Governing Body, H2 is for wastewater treatment plant dissolved oxygen probe update. Wastewater treatment plants consist of two basic stages, primary treatment and secondary treatment. In the primary treatment stage, the larger solids are removed from wastewater by settling. Secondary treatment is a biological process that removes up to 85% of the remaining organic material through a biological process of cultivating and adding sewage microorganisms to the wastewater. During the secondary treatment stage, sewage is pumped into an aeration tanks, and sludge is loaded with microorganisms and mixed with air, which is also known as dissolved oxygen. The DO is added to the aeration basin to enhance the oxidation process by providing oxygen to aerobic microorganisms, also referred to as bugs, so they can successfully turn organic waste into inorganic byproducts. If the DO content in a basin is too low, the environment is not stable for these bugs, and they will die due to anaerobic zones. This sludge will not be properly treated, and it could force the plant to conduct an expensive and time-consuming biomass replacement process. Because of this risk, many plants, including ours, compensate by adding excessive amounts of DO to their process. However, the problem with the excessive DO levels is energy is wasted, because blowers are running 100% all the time, and expensive aeration equipment undergoes unnecessary usage, that is, the blowers that are running full speed all the time, and unwanted organisms called filamentous biology are promoted. Continuous and precise measurement of dissolved oxygen is cost-effective, keeps the waste treatment process functioning properly, and eliminates the need for frequent sampling and laboratory testing. Measurement of DO is critical measurement and can be accomplished using DO sensor probes. Equipping the aeration basin with online DO measurement sensor probes automates the aeration system to maintain the correct amount of DO. The properly functioning DO sensor probes assure the correct amount of dissolved oxygen is present during the secondary treatment process. The probes measure the content of DO in the basin and vary air productions by ramping the blowers up and down according to how much oxygen is needed in those, dissolved oxygen is needed in those basins. And that is used to, for healthy sewage microorganisms. As I said, providing adequate, accurate DO to the treatment process allows the plant's blowers to function more efficiently by ramping up to the required amount of oxygen needed and pulling themselves back once that's met. That'll reduce wear on those blowers, which are large and very expensive and extend their life. According to the U.S. EPA, properly functioning DO probes may reduce plant energy costs by as much as 50%. I spoke with one city, and they did see a 50% savings in electricity per month by not running those blowers full speed all the time. Currently, we're measuring our dissolved oxygen with a single handheld probe that we have to physically walk out, drop in the basin. It gives us a one-time measurement of what the dissolved oxygen is at probe. We pull it in, and from there, we turn the blowers on and we over-oxygenate, because that's about the only control we have. Having these probes will, these probes will integrate with our software system, which allows them to read the actual dissolved oxygen in the basin, as I said before, run the blowers up and down, providing adequate oxygen without overdoing it, and without putting too much wear and tear on those blowers and using so much electricity. We're requesting to upgrade the plant by adding dissolved oxygen probes, six permanently installed probes. The new probes will continually measure the dissolved oxygen levels in the basins and automatically adjust the blowers to provide the correct amount of dissolved oxygen, excuse me, and help the microorganisms convert the waste into inorganic byproducts. The, as I said, the requested upgrade includes six DO probes, one ORP probe, which will measure the pH of the plant. They're permanently installed in the aeration and anoxic basins. It will include a Wonderware and Utility HelpNet software updates that will allow the probes to talk to our current software system and allow us to control the blowers and the probes via computers in our office. It includes new PL screen and new LDO training software that allow us to control the lead and lag of the reuse pumps. This is a rudimentary diagram of our wastewater treatment plant. The influent comes in here through the headworks and through the fermenter into the anaerobic stage, right there's where the LRP probe will be. There'll be one DO probe in each one of these six basins here. We are requesting spending approval of $86,736.78 for the purchase and installation of the new DO probes and required software upgrades. Little breakdown of the cost is, Aramod is the manufacturer of our plant and also where we will be getting the probes, $42,000 for the probe, that says four, but there are six, six probes from them. Atlas Electric will install the conduit and wire everything. Wonderware and Utility HelpNet will both come in and do software and computer PLC Cost is quoted as $78,851.62. We took the, we got the quotes in November of '21, and so we're anticipating maybe a little bit increase. Sent to Sewer Replacement Reserve Treatment and Processing, which currently has a fund balance of $273,961.34. Questions?
So what's the electricity bill right now?
Matt, I'd have to refer that to Matt. Yes.
I'd have to refer that to Lori. I can get that for you here in just a second.
Do you guys find out, are there any other big purchases that you can get out of that fund?
No, this is the only big purchase out of this fund. If anything else this year, we may have to get a polymer mixer. Ours is as old as the plant, and we're, it's cobbled together, but that's an under $15,000 purchase. This is something that gives us control of the plant, will allow our blowers and some other of our expensive equipment to last longer, because we won't be working as hard. And with that control, as we grow, you know, we've got three subdivisions online now, I know we have talk of more, the more efficient that plant is, the better, and this will help us with some of that.
What was the installation time?
I don't have that off the top of my head. They really hadn't said. We have gone so many times for, prior to me. I would say if everything's good to go by summer.
Will this increase how, the throughput of the plant?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
Will it increase how much, like, how fast you can process?
Not necessarily how fast the process is, but it will sure, as we get a heavier plant, we have more influent coming in, that we can keep the bugs alive and make them efficient so they continue to do what they're supposed to do, and we can make our numbers.
So how long does a probe last?
That's a good question. I don't know, I can't answer that, but I can find out and let you know. Well, this is an expansion to what we currently have. So these, as I said before, we have a single handheld probe, which, which works when you don't have a plant with, when you have a plant that's not as loaded as ours is, but as we get the growth, we need the individual readings from each basin. So this is an actual upgrade here.
Is there a warranty on these probes?
Is there what? A warranty? That's a good question. I don't know, I'll ask, but I'm sure there is. It's an Aramod, it'll be pretty good with everything.
It's one year, I thought.
Yeah, and I think you're right, Brian.
What type of maintenance is it on?
Very low maintenance. You put them in, you put them in the basins, pull them up once while clean them, but other than that, they're low maintenance level.
So you'll be able to change them out yourselves?
When it comes time to change them, yes. Once everything's in, as far as changing goes, yes, but installation, we'll let the probes come in and do the initial installation. We try to do as much work out there as we can.
Yeah.
And save a lot of money. Recently, we had an eight-inch airline that was broken, and we got a $6,800 quote to do it. I sent the guys out there for under $500, they fixed it in two hours, so. They're really good at that, and the guys work hard, and it's a lot of ingenuity, and we try to save money where we can. You know, the plant's getting where, its age, it's still in good shape, but we're starting to see some of the, some of the wear and tear on maintenance items, mechanical stuff, this sort of, you know, whether it's seals, or right now our grit pump, we're replacing the impeller, and it's just over time things wear.
We're just waiting on Matt.
Last month, the electric bill was just under $8,000.
Okay, that's what that was around.
And then, we, over the past five years, we've spent between $80,000 and $82,000 per year.
Okay. So, I mean, it should pay itself back anyway.
It's usually like $6,500-ish during the summer.
Yeah.
When the heaters and stuff aren't running quite so much.
The City of Ellis paid, and we can't, this is obviously their city, but they paid for theirs in two years off electricity savings. We're not gonna say for sure that would happen, that's obviously a byproduct.
It sounds like good news, though.
Right now, the blowers are either all on or all off.
Yes.
They need, say they need to run or operate at 35 or 40%, they're running at 100%.
Yeah, they're running at 100 or nothing, there's no in-between.
And we have, we have a full lifecycle maintenance schedule on all the larger parts planned, so we know that this should significantly extend the life of the blowers.
I got an emotion that we approve to get probed. H2.
Motion by Brent. Second by Sarah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Brooke.
This is item H3, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Quick background, the Goddard Lions Club would like to host the car show on April 1st or 2nd, depending on weather, on Main Street of Goddard between the hours of 3:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Mr. Dan Funky is here representing the Lions Club, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask him directly. They have submitted a special event permit and a road closure permit to host this event, along with all necessary documents, including liability insurance. The event will have amplified sound with music and announcements that will be audible 150 feet away, and will require a sound wave to be approved by City Council. So, as a follow-up with analysis. So as a follow-up with the analysis, Chapter eleven, Article thirteen, Loud Noise, the City Council is considering waiving the sound ordinance that pertains to amplified sound. And I quote, "No person in any open space or within a structure, whether on public or private property shall operate or permit the operation of any sound amplification system so that the sound is plainly audible a distance of one-hundred-and-fifty feet or more from the sound amplification system. Exemption to the system was used in authorized public activities such as parades, fireworks, sports events, musical productions, other activities which have the approval of the governing body of the City of Goddard or Department of the City of Goddard authorized to grant such approval." This event requires a special event permit which has been submitted. The event requires road closure which has been permitted, has been submitted, and it requires a sound waiver, which is being considered right now. So this is the road closure. Santa Fe will be left open and so will First Avenue. It'll just be closing north and southbound of Goddard, right around City Hall, and these businesses over here will be notified. Small publication costs, legally approved as the form. Recommendation, it is recommended that you both waive the reading of the ordinance with a voice vote and then approve the waiver for the sound ordinance for the Goddard Lions Club Car Show and Road Call. And if you do have any questions?
Then they go be the headbanger or rap.
You guys gonna have a burnout box?
We're gonna have one.
A burnout box?
Yes, sir.
No, like Norwich, Norwich, right? Norwich?
No, we're not doing Norwich.
I'll make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Michael. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver for the sound ordinance for the Goddard Lions Club Car Show.
Second by Sarah. Second by Michael. Road call.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Ordinance number eight-eight-three. That was ordinance number eight-eight-two.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, we have part of our administrative cleanup that we're doing through the municipal code. The ordinance is essentially clarifying the municipal code, which is included in the current adoption of the zoning code that was originally passed on September nineteenth, twenty-sixteen with ordinance seven-ninety-three. We had subsequent amendments in twenty-six. To put the duties and responsibilities and composition of the planning commission into the municipal code, which is fairly standard. And for some reason, prior to either my arrival or Ryan's arrival, for whatever reason, this just wasn't in there, which is fairly standard practice in Kansas. The proposed ordinance retains the core of our present practices in that the planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals will remain the same with five members. However, the planning commission currently consists of, I'm sorry, of seven members with at least two of the members residing outside of the city limits. There's no maximum number of the board members who may reside outside of the city. However, city residents are essentially limited to no more than five because we have extraterritorial zoning. So if you have extraterritorial zoning, state statute stipulates that at least two of your members shall reside outside the city limits. So the planning commission's historically consisted of five residents and two non-residents, but within the three-mile zoning area of influence. And the proposed ordinance essentially clarifies that and defines it as five residents and two non-residents. It conforms with all of the initial terms and has the current one serving until their successors are chosen, and we have folks cycling out in twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-one, which again has, has just lapsed and are subject to reappointment. In accordance with the Charter of the Municipal Code, the appointments are made by the mayor with consent of the council. Removal of a board member can occur with the passage of a resolution or by failure of a board member to comply with the requirements of the ordinance. And conforming with all current Kansas statutes and our current city practice, and the ordinance would take effect with the publication in the city's official paper of record. And of course, there's small publication costs and the ordinance is approved to form as it was crafted by city legal. Are there any questions over the composition of the, the ordinance included in the packet for either the city attorney or myself or MICA? Currently, we have two members up for, because Chairman Van Amberghs rotated off, so that's vacant. And we have one board member that moved outside of the territory, so she would be leaving the board.
Any more questions? Motion to waive the reading of the ordinance. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Motion approved.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Sarah. Second by Michael. Road call.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Leland?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
Brent Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer? Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Provided these services last year, including Two Minute Tuesdays, Members Only Facebook Group, a monthly update, the Goddard Guide, Webex Accessibility, Oliver Meetings, Alumni Welcome Bags, the Online Member Directory, Resident Welcome Bags, and then we are partnering with the Genesis Sports Complex to offer advertisement opportunities out there. So looking ahead for this year, in addition to these tasks, the Goddard Chamber Board has decided to form a strategic work group, which will look deeper into the services businesses need from the Chamber. This work group will work closely with the Chamber Finance Committee to recommend strategic goals to the board. A couple of years ago, we did a strategic plan, which was pre-pandemic, and we have made some adjustments to that, but we are noticing that there are some major changes that need to occur with where our focus is going. So we are doing this strategic work group to modify that a little bit. Few other items I want to mention, actually, I'll go through this first. Four leadership luncheons with Kansas Leadership Center. Thane Chastain came out and led those groups, which was very, very good. We are actually doing that again this year and we're partnering with Goddard Academy to involve some of their students as well as we will be offering that to all of the Goddard High Schools as well. Our community events that we participated with, Christmas on Main Street, National Light Out, Neighbors United, the Summer Ball Showdown, and Fall Fest. So you can see our website over four-hundred-thousand member exposures last year. So a few other items, we will be working with the Chamber of Commerce Executives, that is the Chamber Group throughout Kansas, to offer an association healthcare plan for Chamber businesses in twenty-twenty-three. We will have a representative to kick that off at our March Chamber Luncheon to go over the details. This is going to be a great benefit for many small businesses in our area that can't offer health insurance to their employees. It also is a great opportunity if you get in from the ground floor because those rates will be the most competitive at that time. I have been elected to the Chambers, Chamber of Commerce Executive Board of Directors, which gives us an opportunity to work with other Kansas communities and obviously share ideas. Our Goddard Gala, which we've changed the name from our annual mixer, the Goddard Gala will be held on April ninth at Tenganika. This year, we're opening this event up to the community as a fundraiser for the Chamber, and our theme will be Casino Royale, which will be a fun casino atmosphere where attendees can win prizes, and tickets are now available for that. Some other things looking ahead that we are going to be offering, expanded online business tools, increased business support, social media support, Legion opportunities, building business and community relationships, strategic planning, advocacy, and C C E K S. So funding in twenty-twenty-one from the City of Goddard for your membership was seventeen thousand. Basically, it offers many different things, but the most important on this is the support of the Goddard Chamber, ultimately meaning supporting local business. So I'm happy to take any questions about the Goddard Chamber and our past year, if you have any. Otherwise, I will move into community events presentation.
I just got one question, I was gonna ask Brian about that. Do we get that hotel motel tax for promotion? Does any other women help the Chamber promote?
No, we have a, by statute, it goes to transient guest tax fund for, for marketing and promotion. And right now, we're just compiling it in anticipation for how to use it, whether it could be to the Chamber or for advertising Starbahn site or, or other businesses, perhaps like another N C A tournament comes to town or something like that.
How much is in that?
We currently have one-hundred-and-sixteen-thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars and thirty-four cents. And that's, and we just, we mirrored what the city of Wichita, like, seven percent.
Any other questions?
All right, so Goddard Community Events. In preparing my update, I thought it was important to talk to some of the other communities and also do some research online about what, why people host community events and festivals. You know, a lot of times, we want to say it's just a fun community event, but honestly, besides being fun, a well-managed festival and event offer a host of economic and social benefits, including attracting visitors, which stimulates growth of tourism and other businesses in town, generating sales tax. And I hope to have that number for you, but because taxes aren't complete yet, I don't have that from Fall Festival or from the other festivals. I will provide that to you as soon as I am able to get it. And the opportunity to bring the community together and instill a sense of community pride, and the opportunity to strengthen relationships between the community organizations and businesses. This is just a recap of the agreement that we had last year, and I'm not going to read all of this, but I will just kind of do an overview for you. See, in overview, the Chamber provides professional leadership partnerships, budgeting led by the Chamber Finance Committee, which includes business representatives from local banks and Pathway Church, evaluation of events, structure for meetings, holster, hosting as well as an oversight for volunteer sponsorship and vendor database and payment, and communications and media coordination. In addition to this, the Chamber also provides event insurance for each of these community events. So the events for twenty-twenty-one, we feel were a great success. We were lucky that COVID restrictions were lifted and we were able to host all four events. Neighbors United was a little bit smaller than normal because we are still on that verge of COVID and everything being lifted. So we were not able to have the breakfast and volunteer gathering like normally for the kickoff, and lunch was actually provided via drive-through at Chick-fil-A instead of a big gathering, and we hope that that will change this year, so. Last year, we had sixteen completed projects, five grants awarded for projects, a little over three thousand dollars, one-hundred-and-forty-seven volunteers, and five business sponsorships, fifteen-hundred dollars being in kind, and a little over seventeen-hundred in cash. This is the budget from Neighbors United. As you can see, we still have some funds in that account because there weren't as many projects as projected, so that money will be spent this year, obviously. We are hoping that it will be a little bit larger. So for twenty-twenty-two, the date is set for April twenty-third. There will be a kickoff at Pathway Church in February. We are still determining that date. We had it set, but because school was canceled last week for many days and there was not school in session, we've not been able to get with our students that are helping. So Neighbors United began from an idea from a local high school students. They wanted a way to give back to the community. Young Professionals of Goddard, which is now Legion, worked with those students to plan the event, and there's been several changes over the years, but this year, we're actually going back to that original idea, and that is for the students to be able to give back to the community and for us to help build future leaders. I had a couple of students that were going to be here with me tonight, actually to present on Neighbors United, but they were not able to be here because of school cancellations. So we're hoping that maybe we can come do an update after Neighbors United and let them have that experience. So this year, we will be registering, I'll get on the Chamber website. Groups can apply for grants, just like last year and past. Each group is responsible for finding their own project, but we will work with groups to help find projects or volunteers. And then we will obviously be taking photos that will be posted on the Neighbors United site. A lot of this, what we are doing is we are partnering a student with a mentor from the Neighbors United Committee, and so we'll be walking with those students hand-in-hand throughout the process, and they're designing the T-shirts, they're planning the meetings, they are doing a lot of that, they're helping me with the website, learning all of those different skills, so. Okay, National Light Out. It was on August thirteenth. We began meeting in April. We had thirty-five business vendors, approximately thirty-thousand, uh, thirty thousand, I wish, three thousand community members. A six-hundred-and-twenty-dollar donation was sent to First Responders Children's Foundation. That was from the vendor fees and the pie in the face, which many of your city staff took part in that, so we appreciate that. We had four sponsors or four major sponsors, which includes Dylan's Distribution Center, Walmart, the Goddard Chamber, and Pathway Church. Our in-kind donations were about thirty-five-hundred dollars and nine-hundred dollars in cash. This year, we will begin planning on March ninth will be our first meeting, and it is scheduled for August thirteenth. We have moved that a week later than it was normally because Summer Ball Showdown will be hosting their event again, and we didn't want to overlap community events, so.
Will it be on Friday or Saturday?
It's a Friday.
Friday, so the twelfth.
Is it the twelfth, sorry?
Yes, no, that's okay. I just wanna.
I was hoping for Friday, the thirteenth, I guess. Here are some highlights of the evening, and of course, we did add fireworks this year, which was a big hit. And of course, your pie in the face down there in the, here's the budget. We were, we had a little bit left in the budget from this year, but we are hoping to expand that again next year as we continue to grow. That food budget, I will tell you, as we get more and more residents, the food budget for this event will grow, and so it will be a little more expensive, but that's a good thing. Okay, so for Fall Festival, it was held October first through the third. It was a three-day event. We added a Friday tailgate and two events, the Worship Concert and Cornhole on Sunday. It was planned in conjunction with U S D two-five-nine Hall of Fame and the Lions and Tigers Football Game. We had seventy-five vendors on Saturday, thirty-six parade registrations, eighteen stage events, which took place on two different stages. We had our main stage and we had a stage in Kids' Corner. Mrs. Cole's Kids' Corner was a new thing this year, which was a huge hit. We had inflatables and a clown and bubbles and all kinds of fun stuff. Seventeen business sponsors, in-kind donations of about twenty-three-thousand dollars and cash sponsors, a little over eighty-seven-hundred. Six thousand community members was approximate, that is for all three days. That number could be duplicated if somebody attended more than once. That is obviously not an exact number because that's impossible to get, but feel like this was a pretty good estimate. Couple of quotes from attendees in the area, which was really nice. One thing I want to point out, here are some highlights from the, the weekend. The one thing I want to point out, and it's kind of hard to see, but next to the stage, you see the Goddard Guide or the Festival Guide. That logo on there was actually done through a contest. That was the first year that we held this contest, asking community members to design. We will be doing that again. Last year, Ellie Taylor, her mom, actually, Eva is here, but Ellie Taylor won that, and we were able to have T-shirts sold at Walmart as well as stickers and different promotion items done, so it was really cool to have that and have somebody local, especially one of our Goddard graduates do that. And as you can kind of see down there, it did rain on us in the morning, but it did not damper anybody. It prayed when on us planned. Our budget, as you can see here, went a little bit over on this budget, but we did have reserves, which is why we planned those reserves and when we asked. The entertainment budget went a little over and was more than we, we hadn't hoped for. There were several different factors in that, including the fact that there are many stages that was not available, one due to River Festival, and two, several organizations had already promised stages because since events were happening after COVID, everybody wanted to do an event, so it was a little more expensive for our entertainment. to do an event, so it was a little more expensive for our entertainment. Um, I honestly don't see that changing anytime soon, unfortunately. So for 2022, um, dates are October twenty-first through the twenty-third. We will keep it as a three-day event with some minor changes, um, per the feedback with the event surveys. This decision to move the date was made in a stakeholder meeting held in October. Stakeholder for this event would be defined as a business or organization with a vested interest in significant financial contribution related to the event. The stakeholders who participated in this meeting were the Goddard Lions Club, Pathway Church, a couple of businesses with significant final financial contributions, the Goddard Public Schools, Goddard Chamber of Commerce, and the City of Goddard Police Department. It was voted in this meeting to form a steering committee to oversee the budget and major final financial decisions for Fall, Fall Festival. The steering committee members will head subcommittees, which will then plan the specifics for the event, and those subcommittees will be open to the community. So anybody that wants to participate, there is an opportunity. During the stakeholder meeting, it was voted seven to one, with the Goddard Public Schools abstaining from the vote, to move the date, um, of the 2022 festival to October twenty-first, twenty-third, in order to align with other community events and the Lions versus Tigers football game. This is a one-time trial. Um, we will reevaluate that date after the event to see if we, if it was a good idea or not. Um, the theme for this year will be back in the swing of things, and like I said, we are now taking, um, entries into the artwork contest, so. The stakeholders agreed that most part of the success for the 2021 Fall Fest was due to the organizations and businesses all working together. It was truly a community event. We felt like the collaboration of the Fall Fest and School District had a great turnout. There were a number of different issues, obviously, that could arise with moving the date, and I know some of these have been brought up. Um, some concerns include weather, the perception that it's always been first weekend, a concern to get vendors and food trucks, and ultimately, it was decided and voted in favor of moving the date from one year, with the understanding that this will be reevaluated after the event this year. Going back to the reason communities hold festivals and the number-one reason for income and the awareness it generates for the community and local businesses. It is important and imperative that the Fall Fest, as well as the other community events, become self-sufficient. In order to achieve this, which won't happen immediately, but we must plan these events when we can bring in the greatest number of attendees. So that was taken in consideration when moving the event. Looking at the concern for weather, um, this year, Fall Festival was on the first weekend of October, which was sixty-eight degrees in the afternoon, but after a full morning of rain. On October twenty-third, it was seventy-eight degrees and sunny. So unfortunately, we can't really take weather into a factor because it's Kansas. Um, for Christmas on Main Street, it was sixty degrees in December, so. Um, we have seven vendors already registered for this year, including two food trucks. Um, we, the food trucks were extremely happy last year, they all sold out. Most of them sold out a day ahead of when they had planned, so. We do understand there's a lot of emotions involved in planning an event, um, especially one that's near and dear to the community, sometimes means making hard decisions. Stakeholders truly made this decision by looking at all of these reasons and options, and the date will be looked at again after the Fall Fest conclusion this year to decide how to move forward. Okay, finally, Christmas on Main Street.
I'll tell you, Angie, so I, I'm not gonna interrupt you. So I went to the Kingless League of Municipalities Conference and speak, and so we had Mayor's line. And our Fall Fest is the one thing that other cities around our India, so they, they were wondering, how do you get it organized? How do you, and I said, let's, you know, we, we adjusted things. They said, well, you've been doing this for a long time. Well, our community is very involved, so that's one thing that does stand out to a lot of areas around.
That's great to hear.
Everybody in the community should be pretty proud of that.
And we did have several of the other chambers reach out to me and ask me questions about where we got our stage and the different things, so it is nice that people noticed.
Yeah. So.
Well, we were told that the carnival would follow the date for this year. Um, we did find out this morning that the carnival took another, a larger carnival in another community, so I'm in talks with a separate carnival to see if we can get them. When I originally talked to them in October, they had the date open, and so I'm just waiting to hear back from them. Um, after we hear back from them, we will have to reevaluate according to whatever they tell us, so. But the stakeholder meeting, we will obviously have to get back together and discuss if there are changes, so. Which we're hoping that we can resolve it. So, anything else about Fall Fest or is, okay?
That's it, that's all I had to say.
Okay, all right, so Christmas on Main Street. Um, for a first-time event, we felt like it was a success. There were many, um, kinks that will have to be worked out. Um, obviously, there was a lag time between the parade and the, um, Christmas tree lighting. That was due in part because we had several of the parade registrations drop out the day of, um, due to COVID. We also had several vendors, um, drop out because of COVID or having to babysit because their parents had COVID. So we're hoping that that will change. We're also hoping that after people saw the outcome and how many people we had, that they'll want to take part next year, so. Just a few highlights here. Um, we had a lot of different activities that people were really excited about. I heard the chili dinner was a kick, a hit. A lot of people were happy with that. Um, we had carolers. Unfortunately, we did get to have Pathway Church, not unfortunately, we got to have Pathway Church. Sorry, I came all the wrong way. Sorry, Becky. Sorry, Ronnie. Throw my board, too. No, so, we were fortunate to have Pathway Church carolers. Unfortunately, we're not able to work with the schools because they had a performance that evening. So we did bring in a group from East High School, have a connection there. Um, it would be my daughter, um, who also helped with the caroling, but Pathway Church did an amazing job. Um, we did also do Storytime with Santa again, which was, um, held over four weeks, um, on Facebook Live, and again, that was a, a big hit. Um, approximately eight hundred people attended that event. Here are the highlights. Um, I think that's, there is the funding. We did go over just a little bit on this. We weren't sure exactly on budget what to expect being a first-time event, but that obviously was taken out of reserves as well, so.
I was so impressed by the turnout on Christmas. I mean, I wasn't expecting, for it being the first year, I wasn't expecting high numbers like I thought I seen.
Yeah.
Yet, throughout the night, it just kept increasing and increasing, so it was pretty impressive. I was happy.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, and I think we were very lucky with weather. Um, and I really hope, though, that people seeing the outcome, that we'll be able to get more vendors and more participation in the parade next year. One thing we are doing, and I should have mentioned that, uh, we are moving the date to Sunday, December fourth, instead of having it on Saturday. The reason for that is because on Saturday, we did run into, um, conflicts with the schools having theater performances and band performances, so we weren't able to have those groups participate in the parade. Um, we'd also like to have some theater groups do, you know, different performances of maybe little skits and stuff, dress-in, character, and things like that, so. And in addition, on Saturday, December third, Devastates has their festival of trees, so we don't want to compete with any of our other business partners. With the budget, um, so our event cancellation policy, there's nothing different here. Basically, we put in this, just saying that if they cancel more than two weeks before, um, the Chamber will not take our administrative fee. Um, we do, I mean, part of that, if there is money, we will, the deposits made to vendors will already have to be spent, so we won't be able to recoup that money, but. Past funding, in 2020, we asked for thirty thousand, um, six thousand per event plus six thousand in reserve. Last year, since we were not able to hold many of those events in 2020, or we there were held online or a different way, we only asked for a little over twenty-five hundred. We are coming back and asking for the full thirty thousand this year, with minor changes, um, in that Neighbors United only taking five thousand with a fifteen hundred dollar administrative fee. National Line Out, six thousand with a fifteen hundred admin fee. Fall Festival, increasing that to the thirteen thousand, we're taking basically those reserves and moving it to that, um, because Fall Festival is a much larger and more expensive event. Twenty-five hundred dollar administrative fee. And Christmas on Main Street, six thousand with a fifteen hundred dollar administrative fee. Um, I will tell you, if you have questions about that administrative fee, what it covers is staff time, uh, which is, that does not actually cover very much of the staff time. It is more spent on credit card processing, mailing and postage, and registration, the software that we use, and then some of our staff time, obviously, but, um, let's see. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those now.
One, are you needing the thirty thousand?
Um, actually, we need to get it as soon as possible, which is why I'm coming to you earlier than normal. We are having to put down deposits, especially on stages and things like that. Last year, we waited, um, longer than we should have, and we were not able to get a less expensive stage. So, um, obviously, Neighbors United is coming up in two months, and we are needing to start with the promotion of that and starting giving out grants, so.
Can you go back to the last five with the Fall Fest? You said we, uh, the reserves, uh, uh, I don't know, the very last five.
This one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So what was the reserve that we had in that were thrown in the?
So, yeah, we did six thousand per event and a six thousand reserve.
Okay.
So we're just moving the funding around a little bit. Neighbors United, we still have money in there, so we're taking a little less there, and then adding the reserve to Fall Festival is on with, with that.
Angie, did you check with the city of Wichita if they had the stage that's, I got that, that they?
I did, and here.
Or it's just, or it's all contained, I don't know.
I did, and I'll read this to you. This is why we were not able to get it last year. Um, as of April first of 2021, they are not offering rentals, um, due to overwhelming demand. So it was on their website, unfortunately, so. I think that's one reason why cost is being driven up. I also researched several other, um, companies that offer stage rentals, and they are in the same price range. Uh, in fact, I have a friend of mine that I didn't realize is in the, or the business, and I gave him basically a breakdown of what we paid, and he said it was right in line with what everybody else is charging right now, so. Um, what we paid for the stage was actually seventy-five hundred for the stage itself, and then we paid another seventy-five hundred with a twenty thousand dollar in-kind donation from the company for, um, lighting, sound, manpower, delivery of the stage. Um, we had somebody on staff three days straight, they actually camped out behind the stage to make sure equipment and stuff was okay, so that's why we paid the full fifteen thousand. It was not just in rental of the stage, but obviously for the cost of the equipment and everything else. I will tell you, this year, we are working with Pathway Church. Um, we will have the stage two days and not three. Pathway is going to do, um, a service in the park to work with, and maybe work with the other churches, um, and they're going to bring in a different stage that day, so it will save us a little bit of money that way.
Okay. Matt, which budget, uh, which fund did it come out of?
It's general fund.
General fund?
Yeah.
What's preventing us from touching that marketing fund for travel instead of the gen-, I mean, I guess I don't care really, but what's stopping us from using that fund, that money?
We historically have essentially said we were always saving it, and this came from when we implemented it, to essentially market the Starbahn district. So we just, we thought we would have been using it long before now.
How much is added to it every year?
Well, right now, the only hotel that's contributing is, is the Roadway Inn.
Right.
And then anything within the district goes to pay the, the, repay the bonds.
Right.
So we won't get to see any sort of sales tax or transient guest tax revenue from the district until, until the bonds are retired.
Oh, so we don't get any from the bond?
And so that's why it's, it's important that we keep the, the retirement window on track for us to ever see a return on, on our investment.
We include, we include this funding in the budget for general fund.
Okay. So maybe if we wanted to do other things for whether it's the Lions or anything in the future, we could look into some of that, right? Or even wanting to promote the city and?
You guys can use, I mean, you can use the transient guest tax if that's what you want.
No, I mean, if we got?
There, there's, there's not enough generation of revenue through transient guest tax right now to pay for this. There's, there's cash there, but there's not a regular.
Yeah, you wouldn't cash flow this on an annual basis.
No. This would be, that would be a one-time thing, basically, yeah.
Well, I have no problem with, you guys have a problem with, you're owing the six thousand over in the Fall Fest? Any questions for that? How is the Fall Fest committee going? Is it running? I mean, I think I've heard there might be slight issues, but is there, is everything seem to be working out okay?
Yes, so, so far, we've been meeting with the steering committee. We have not started our subcommittee meetings yet. Um, the steering committee is just doing the oversight of budget and then the overall decisions, um, which, obviously, kind of waiting on this meeting for them to start making those big decisions, but we will start having subcommittees.
Well, I mean, I guess that we need to make a vote so they can have interaction.
Want to make a motion due to the funding request of thirty thousand?
Motion by Grant.
Second.
Second by Michael. All members say aye.
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 All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. And thank all of you board members for coming.
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, just some images of, uh, the progress on, uh, the Starbahn from earlier today with Thatcher and the drone, while looking back to the Uh, the ball fields for Phase Two, which are currently under construction, and you can see, they've started pouring some of the footings for the field and the containment. Uh, review of our subdivisions and, and their current occupancy rates courtesy of MICA from the year end. And you can see that we're nineteen percent filled in Arbor Creek, a hundred percent filled in Seasons, a hundred percent filled in St. Andrews, a hundred percent filled in Spring Hill, and we're, um, a hundred percent, uh, permits issued for Elk Ridge. We'll show you some progress on here in a second. Um, we haven't had any of the lots for Rustic Creek sold, and of course, a hundred percent sold for Autumn Blaze. Uh, you can see more work in the clubhouse at Arbor Creek and its pool. Some additional construction, looking back to the southwest, but you can see the, uh, the ball fields in the background there for the school. Cloverleaf with the phasing map, and some images, uh, looking back to the northeast for homes under Phase Two, and you can see where Phase Three would be off the side. Once we progress, the road stops right, right there, and then we continue back around. Elk Ridge, you can see all the homes under construction there, uh, some new construction and then another foundation underway. Rustic Creek with, uh, the final asphalt paving cap underway there. And then to just let you know that, uh, we did get the paperwork submitted and acknowledged for the opioid settlement, so now we're in hurry-up-and-wait mode. Also, I wanted to make you aware that Thursday, um, MICA and April will be presenting at the Chamber from eleven-thirty to one, so if you're interested in, in attending, just let Thatcher and I know so we can get a reservation for you. And then, uh, as you know, we've talked about having some council workshops with respect to development. Uh, we usually do it during the budget. We know we have some development fee discussions that we think it may be beneficial to have going forward, so, uh, would, would you prefer that we look at scheduling the workflow for these on a special day or having it an hour or two before the council meeting? I know coming from work, that might be an issue, so. In the past, when we've tried to schedule the days, everyone's days, and with kids and whatnot, it's, it's really crazy, so that's why I was thinking, maybe even if we just got an hour or so before the council meeting, that might be beneficial.
Why don't we do it?
Or we can have it as an actual agenda item.
Well, why don't we do it the twenty-first when we, we're talking about not having a meeting, since we don't have much on the agenda?
I asked for a few meetings, about two or three of them, because I think there's going to be different layers to the conversation. I mean, we can do that, that's for sure, but, and then I at least wanted one meeting, maybe the last one, whatever we do. but, and then I at least wanted one meeting, maybe the last one, whatever we do, and with the planning commission, just so we're all on the same board, kind of all know what's going on with fee structures and new, new developments, wherever it might be. I, I don't know. I, I didn't know what you guys wanted to do, whether it be before our council meeting, before a planning commission meeting, or on a special day.
Which kind of gets us to the next slide, which was what we were talking about with President's Day. And historically, we haven't had anything pressing, and if we did, we either had it the Wednesday after, or the Monday before, or we had a joint planning commission meeting. I know there are some conflicts on the Wednesday and the planning commission days, so. Anyway, just, or we can just make sure that we block ample time during a council meeting for these discussion.
Work session?
Yes.
We can just have that sucker at the library.
I can fit that many in.
Yeah, just us.
I think, I don't care, I don't care what you guys want to do, and I, because I'll be flexible. I just think before we really make any decision on fee structures and everything, we all need to be on the same page. Bring the planning commission in, so basically we're, this, that, and I'm aware of everything.
Or we can do it here, or I mean, we can do it anywhere.
But then on that Tuesday, they have city, or.
We got municipal court.
Municipal court, so.
And then the third.
Either the library or next door on that Tuesday and do our 60 to 90 minute meeting.
On, on that President's Tuesday, the day after?
Yeah, the day after.
Yeah, I, I'll have to check again, and it may require Ryan to do some legal research because it's a, it's a, it's our regular meeting technically, because we have in the ordinances that if there's a holiday on the Monday, it defaults to the Tuesday. So I don't know if we just need to make sure that we, we published.
Well, we can't, oh.
That it was going to be.
It's still a live stream meeting too, but it'll still be an open meeting.
What's up with here?
Municipal court.
Courts in here, yeah.
Yeah.
We're just having a long night. I mean, we can, I'm, I'm really.
Or, or, you know, we had planned on presenting the, the benefit fee, which is the, well, we could do the benefit or the equity fee. Mike, Mike has got them. Once we had that discussion last time, we got it pretty well addressed. So, I mean, we can present it just as a regular agenda item at the meeting in March, and, and just know that we're going to focus on a good chunk of that, so it'll appear light on paper, but it may be a 60 to 90 minute discussion for the one item.
We can do that.
Yeah.
That works better for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, let's just do that. Larry, you okay with that?
I don't know, 3:00 before, 6:30, 9:00, 10:00, 12:00.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll plan on March 7th and make, make that discussion on, on either the benefit or the equity.
And what time are we going to start it?
It'll be 7:00, just normal, but we'll, we'll.
Longer than this.
Okay. So we'll, we'll look at maybe sliding some of this around. As you see, we'll have the benefit and equity fee. We'll break that in two, so that we don't have any sort of confusion, and then move that up. So we'll rearrange all of this.
And so then we're not doing anything.
On the 20.
Or what would normally be the February 21st meeting?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. That concludes staff report unless you have any questions for us. Thank you.
Hey, Brian?
Larry, how do you have?
Oh, well, I have to, ladies and gentlemen, the streets clean, we have a smoke ladder around the fall event from the market here on Main Street anyway, scraping.
We were out in Guadalupe for those two days.
They don't have, it seems to me like that Starbarn thing is going up and sold, I don't know what they're doing. None of those events, any progress on the food, I'm not real happy with it, but we're trying.
Sarah?
Um, lots of things. I want to express my congratulations to our new officers and for officer show promotion to lieutenant. I want to thank Lance for keeping our team going during all the transition and everything, and bringing in new blood and keeping us staff. And thank the Chamber and the Board for all the hard work you guys do for our community and keeping events. And I mean, I went to every event, I think, and we had amazing turnout, so it just blew me away. The turnout and the variety of stuff we had and all of those. But, public works, thank you. And I will fully drive, if you'll let me.
Might have saved the city attorney on that. I don't.
I have not had a traffic infraction in.
Just make sure the insurance is paid up.
I was 18 the last time I had a traffic infraction, and I'm 43, so it's been a very long time.
Hey.
Bumpers out.
Michael, is that good? Did that, you good?
Told you.
Snowballing.
Well, yeah, I appreciate the Chamber's presentation, and I think, you know, as the transition was happening to this kind of a model, I think, you know, there is some, what's the word, hesitancy. But yeah, I mean, you know, you guys obviously did a great job last year, and everybody took notice, even other cities, and I think that just speaks to, you know, how great of a job you did. And then on the police force, are we full on officers now?
We're short one right now.
Just one?
Let's steal another one from Hayesville.
We have one on.
We're just short on the actual overall staff of 14. We still have one that is on light duty and one that's on military leave.
Good job.
Are any of our officers now on the reserves?
One is in the military reserves right now. He's the one that's deployed or on an assignment, I should say.
You ready?
She'll light out.
All right. You've done a great job. You've done a great job. Hey, Dan, by the way, you going to save me a parking spot in front of City Council?
What's going on?
In that car shop?
You put your registration in, I'll pick.
Where's that? Where do I get a register?
I had to have the data approved before we did anything.
Will there be cinnamon rolls?
Will there be what?
Cinnamon rolls.
Yes.
Yes!
He did really good making the chili.
Those were so great.
They were really good making the chili on Christmas. That was good. Was that all he had?
Yes, that's all I have. He's been talking about plowing. He's been talking about probing us.
Okay. I can't, I can't say that's hard. Thank you all again. Andy, thank you, thank you for the work. Lance, thank you for everything. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah, second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.